I do have to wait for the, oh, wait, one second. It's waiting, Josh.
We are recording.
Okay, don't record yet. And thank you, everyone. This is a great meeting. Hey, Josh. Good evening. You good?
I'm good.
All right. Miles, we're good?
We're good.
Okay. Good evening. Coming to order the Select Board meeting for May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. First order of business is public comment. I understand. Is there someone wishing to speak? Andy? Come on up.
Where do you want me?
Oh, right here, please, at the table. Okay. Welcome to public comment. You have three minutes to speak. We do not necessarily engage to talk. We do not necessarily respond.
All right. So in some ways, I feel like this was just really impulsive, but start with your name here. Oh, I was going to say, do I have to start with my name and precinct?
Uh, and address.
Yeah. Andy Weiser, Seven Emerson Road, Precinct E. So I felt like this was really impulsive, but I went home from town meeting last night with so many things percolating in my head about Article thirty. Uh, the quiet zone. Yeah, the quiet zone information stuff. So I have been back and forth about this personally for a long time because I didn't mind the train whistles. They have gotten way worse since COVID, for whatever reason. Well, they're longer and more of them. But I was totally intrigued by the idea of stop at the junction. And I'll bike on a walking path, bike path, because I'm a big walker and walking through Needham is not often pleasant, is often not pleasant, especially I have to come down Chestnut Street. So I liked that idea. And then Doug said, we need all the transportation we can get. And I thought, yes, we do. And then I thought, maybe there's a way to coordinate with the MBTA, funds from the MBTA. And whatever we do, we've talked for years about a local, needing a local bus. So a local bus that could go back and forth all day, every day from the junction, probably all the way up, you know, like to, uh, to where Webster hits, hits Highland, come back around and just loop. So people get off the train, they get on the bus. We do some, you know, I'm sure it can be arranged so it's sort of smooth, so it's fairly smooth. That gets rid of the problem of the train whistles all through town. It keeps the problem of the train whistle in the golf course, but we, it sounds like we're going to have that problem anyway. And I saw, I felt like I came back to seeing value in the train whistle, listening to the couple of people, the gentleman who got up and spoke about growing up here and walking on the tracks. And that's what kids do. We're not going to stop eleven from walking on the tracks. The idea that the engineer is always going to notice somebody and blare the horn, we all know, we drive cars. It's not, it can't possibly be that different, and they're only human beings. And then Lois, quite honestly, Lois's story about the four-year-old. So, and that, all of that on top of the idea that we will have to close the roads for longer periods of time every time the train is at the center as, is right here in Needham Center. And our traffic is already horrible. I mean, we want, would like to promote, I'm sure we want to promote more shopping here in town. People from other towns are not going to come here because it's horrible to get through town. So I'm just hoping maybe all of that, something about that can be put into this study.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you all.
Is there anyone else in the room who wants to make public comment? Okay. Excellent. Moving on to the Public Works Week proclamation. Shane Mark, the Assistant Director of Public Works, come on up. See you. Hello. You guys had a good day at town meeting. I understand the person who did all the presentations did an excellent job.
He was good. We appreciate the, we appreciate the vote of confidence.
How's Public Works week going?
Great. So I just wanted to start off tonight by saying thank you to the Select Board, Town Manager's Office, the Finance Committee, Town Meeting members, and the residents for their continued support of the Public Works Department, as will be acknowledged in the proclamation that will soon be read. The employees of Public Works Department are committed to advancing the quality of life for all here in Needham. And we do this by several means. I won't mention them all, but some of them are by providing clean, safe drinking water for the residents of the town, providing streets and sidewalks that are safe for all users, by providing beautiful, safe, and usable open spaces in our parks and on our grounds, and by providing emergency, emergency management during rain, wind events, and snow and ice events. Needham Public Works employees are vital to making our community a dynamic place to live and to work. We are the silent arm of public safety, and we celebrate the work and the accomplishments of our staff this upcoming week through several different events that will be held. Starting this Saturday, in conjunction with Park and Recreation, we'll be manning the Touch Truck event. We'll have nine vehicles there from Public Works Department with Public Works staff for the kids and families here in Needham to play and toy around with. We'll also be kicking off a fill a Public Works Truck Food Drive for the Needham Community Council Food Bank. We'll be dropping off several boxes throughout the town, the CAF, the library here at Town Hall, at the PSAB. And we'll have a box there at the Touch Truck's event for food donations. And all the food donations that we receive next week will go to the Community Council, to the Food Bank. So we'll be giving back to our community through our food drive as well. And also starting on Saturday, we'll do daily divisional highlights throughout the week through social media campaigns. So we'll be highlighting each one of our divisions, providing a picture of the staff for each division, and just highlighting the work that each division does. And lastly, culminating in a capstone event next Thursday, where we celebrate the Public Works employees by providing a luncheon to them and a cookout for our Public Works staff, just as a way to say thank you. And that's funded through our leadership team and DPW, through donations of the DPW, and it's a huge hit with the employees. So we just wanted to say thank you for your time and your support in the many ways you help acknowledge and celebrate the work that Public Works does and the way that we advance the quality of life for all here in our great town.
Thank you. That's a great week.
It is. We're very excited for it. So.
I like the barbecue with the end.
Yes.
Heidi, do you have a proclamation in one of you?
I do. I do. The Town of Needham, two thousand and twenty-four Public Works Week Proclamation. Whereas Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and the well-being of the people of Needham. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of Public Works officials. And these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Needham to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of Public Works and Public Works programs in their respective communities. And an informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of Public Works systems and programs such as water, sewer, drains, streets, and highway, traffic control, public buildings, solid waste disposal, recycling, parks and forestry, and snow removal. And whereas the year two thousand and twenty-four marks the sixty-fourth annual National Public Weeks, Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, and the Public Works employees are recognized as first responders who contribute to the health, safety, and comfort of this community, which greatly depends on these facilities and services. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff Public Works departments is materially influenced by the public's attitude towards and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Select Board does hereby proclaim the week of May nineteenth through May twenty-fifth as Public Works Week in the Town of Needham, and calls upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the challenges involved in providing Public Works services and to recognize Public Works employees and the everyday contributions they make as first responders towards our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life, dated this fourteenth day of May, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you. Might there be a motion? Who might call these?
There might.
Mr. Chair, I move that the board vote to approve and sign the two thousand and twenty-four Public Works Week Proclamation.
Second.
Okay, excellent. Discussion.
I just want to say, uh, so I'm not sure that the proclamations are always, uh, you know, stand out to me, but this one actually does. And the thought of Public Works employees as first responders, especially this year when we've had, you know, the devastating flooding and so much, so many, so many events happening. And I think this is, is really an extraordinary position that Public Works holds in the town. We really count on Public Works, and so often we forget, because you sort of behind the scenes. So I think this one in particular strikes me as extremely important and really something that I, I hope becomes visible to the whole town.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Yeah, I would, I would echo that. And, and it certainly shows in the fact that you guys have to respond at all hours, very rapidly, getting all hands on deck. And the other thing that I've just been really impressed with, with, with the department is how innovative you are and how you're looking at new challenges and in particular, climate change and more emergencies and how you're going to deal with it and what new technologies are there. And we're very fortunate, but if you guys do your job perfectly, nobody notices, right? So that's, you know, why I think the recognition is great.
Thank you.
DPW staff is incredibly nice and friendly and approachable. Anyone asks a question, you, you have an answer. It's really an asset to the town, all of you.
Yeah, we appreciate that. That's very important. We aim to, uh, please the residents of the town because that, at the end of the day, that's who we work for.
Shane, do you want to mention the scholarships since Kristin Wright is here?
Yes, it's a great opportunity to mention the scholarship. So the New England chapter, the American Public Works Association, will be celebrating next week, and they hold a luncheon on Wednesday, the twenty-third. And as part of that luncheon, they award scholarships and different awards for Managers of the Year, et cetera. They have a scholarship that you can apply for where if you receive the scholarship, they will pay for you to attend the Public Works Expo, which this year is held in Atlanta. So Kristin Wright put in for that. She was selected as the scholarship recipient.
Congratulations.
So we get to celebrate another Public Works employee by sending her to Public Works Expo.
That's awesome.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. We'll make sure that we tell our employees, and we'd like to extend an invite to the Select Board on Thursday. If you'd like to come to the cookout, celebrate, you're more than welcome. We'll get the information to you.
Thank you.
I think we have a vote that we still need to take.
Thank you. We were just discussing. All right. So, um, let's have the vote. All those in favor of the suggested motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? There are no nays. Just any ayes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Next, we have a hearing, a, um, an alcohol license hearing. Schiff Meg LLC doing business as Needham Center Fine Wines. We have Will Patel, Chief Schlechter, who's also the keeper of the lockup, and Lieutenant Forbes. Come on, please come up. It's a good one, right?
Is that like a historical?
It's in the, no, no. There's documentation.
There is.
It really is.
It's in the Sans script, but it's.
So a little context here, there was a case, were you going to bring us up to speed with it?
Sure, this, yep. As you know, we do our annual compliance checks on the liquor establishments across the town. We do it multiple times a year. This year, on December sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, we were conducting one of our annual compliance check. Austin Broderick conducted the check with one of our undercover operatives, who is a person who's under twenty-one years of age, a local student, usually a college student. As part of these checks, an underage party goes into the establishment and attempts to purchase alcohol using only their real registry and motor vehicles issued license as a form of identification. The, the underage person had money that only had the money that was given to them by the Needham Police Department. All other means of payment were secured by the police department. The underage party operative two entered the Needham Center Wine Spirits at located at ten thirteen Great Plain Ave around approximately five fifteen P M. Officer Broderick remained outside while the operative two attempted to purchase a six-pack of Bud Light. The cashier did check the operative two's ID, but still sold the beer anyways. Then the operative returned to the vehicle with the receipt and the alcohol. And Officer Broderick went back into the store, spoke with the manager, explained that there was a compliance check and that they had failed. I think you've probably seen the packet. The individuals used, they were out-of-state licenses. They looked extremely young. And, you know, obviously, they did not use a scanner and, you know, they were nineteen, eighteen, nineteen years old. So there should have been a mechanism from then looking at the ID that was presented. You know, it's pretty clear to show that they were under twenty-one.
These are the under twenty-one vertical.
Well, they're out-of-state licenses, so Mass has the, the vertical, yes.
Okay. Great. And then so following up, then we brought you in, right, Will? So.
Yes.
Let's hear.
Yeah, so I, I aware of the whole situation, when, what had happened and everything. And I didn't know I had to have a scanner before until we had this violation. And after me and Miles were going back and forth in the emails, as soon as I heard that we need to get a scanner as soon as possible. So we got it within probably, maybe within a week or two weeks max. And the violation happened, I explained that before when I was here. The person who, he asked for the ID and he missed the date, or I don't know what happened at the time he was working. And he just sold, sold it to minor, which is, I don't deny, I know he, he made a mistake. But the thing is, the violation had happened because of the person wasn't. We, I, we took over the store in March of twenty-eight of last year. And the rules and regulations changed right maybe after a couple of weeks we took over. There was amended or rules and regulation changing. And I didn't know at that timeframe that I have to have a scanner in the place. So that was in my end. And the person who made the mistake, actually, he did go to the TIPS training. My, all the other, all the department manager even went to the TIPS training. And we also have the scanner, so I'm just requesting to the board today to just, if we can reduce the violation penalty. And that's what I'm here for today.
Okay, so you took over in early twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-three?
Correct.
Okay, so.
March twenty.
All right, so you take over, you're doing the, running the store, the regulations changes that you do need a scanner. This is not get found out until end of the year, December. So you've had nine months you were running without it.
Like I said, I, I don't, I'm not denying that fault, but I do, I didn't know it was a scanner, rules and regulation was proposed in the.
Okay.
That particular.
Right. So initially, we had talked.
Yes.
And it was, um, for the sale, that was one-day suspension, as follows, uh, basically the guidelines. And it was held in abeyance.
Yep.
Correct.
Got it.
And, but for the not having the scanner, it was, what, two days of suspension?
Correct.
Okay. So that was the initial thought to do. That's the structure. Okay, but you're now here to talk about it.
Yeah, so that's the reason I'm requesting that if, if I can just have reduced the penalty or something to not having a scanner for two-day suspension, I just want to see if I can just have reduced the penalty for that. And I do have it now.
Right.
Like I said, as soon as I found out that's what we needed, so we ordered it right away. We got it right away.
All right, do you use it?
Yes.
Okay. Use it for everyone under, look, who looks under forty?
Under forty, yep.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question?
Please, yes.
The town manager, actually. I wonder, Kate, can you help me remember how we communicated the change in our policy?
We emailed them to all the licensees on May first, two thousand and twenty-three. So they were sent out.
Okay. All right. I'm a little concerned that you, you went nine months without the scanner.
I must just misread it, the scanner policy at the time it came.
Yeah. I understand that, but we revised our, our, our schedule of consequences because we wanted our first time to be memorable. Because we don't want this to happen again. So I guess I'm just a little concerned that, um, you had a very long period without the scanner despite being contacted by the town, and then, and now you're here to, to lighten the sentence. I guess I'm just a little concerned about that.
Yeah, I would also say that I think holding a license is a privilege. It's not a right. It is a privilege, and I think one of the responsibilities of a license holder is to keep up to date on the regulations.
So you mentioned that the employee had been to TIPS training. Is that since the violation or originally?
No, the, after the violation, because the, all the manager was TIPS trained before, not in the town, but they do, at the time, they had online. So they, all the department manager was TIPS trained by online. But now the town requires that we, every two years, we have to take the TIPS training. So now we put that in the schedule that we send all the managers the TIPS training every two years.
Okay, but I, I thought an employee who allows a violation also has to go back for TIPS training before they can work again.
Yes, yes, he did also.
He's already been back. And that was in person?
Yeah, that was in person. That was in person.
Josh Smith.
Ask Kate, what, does the policy have a guideline on what the penalty is?
So in the revision of the regulations in the last year, the board changed the violations to be violations of the regulations and then violates of compliance checks. So compliance checks, the first offense is a one-to-two-day suspension. Violation of the regulations, which is the not having the scanner, a first offense is one-to-five-day suspension. Those are the suggested orders that the board adopted, this version.
So the, the proposed penalty, the initially proposed penalty was already very lenient.
Right. Yeah, just to unpack it a bit. So you had an employee who gets an obviously illegal or underage ID. They look at it, they check it. Everything's going right, except they sell them the beer. Okay? That one's hard to look past because everything was working, but it didn't work. So that was a, that was a big mistake. And I'm thinking, what we gave you, um, we basically put on ice and said, you know, do forbearance on that one. And I think that was extremely lenient. But on the not having the scanner, like the employees, employees, employees are employees. Sometimes they make mistakes. But your management, and like, I'm more inclined to throw the book at you a bit more because your management, your responsibility was to make sure there was a scanner. Your responsibility is to read everything and to make sure in compliance. And then when you have checked, you double-check. So I'm not sure.
Like I said, it was my mistake.
Yeah.
Not having a scanner. That's, that I don't deny. That's hundred percent. But I'm just requesting, if, if that's the first violation I had in probably all this, in my whole life span of working in this industry for at least twenty years.
Right. But it was a big screw-up.
Yes.
Okay.
This, this store, I mean, Needham's a small town.
Yeah.
So your premises, it's like right in between all of our schools. We've got a lot of high school students. We've got a lot of college students. I, I don't think this is something we can play around with, honestly. I mean, you know, when we redid our regulations, we redid it because we were having issues. People weren't, you know, our retailers weren't able to pass our compliance checks on a regular basis. And we were having too many slip-ups. And we, as a group, we decided that we needed to be a little bit more strict. And I, I'm not inclined on our first go-around to lower the bar. I'm just not.
Okay.
Personally.
I would add that I don't think this is something we want to negotiate as a practice.
Yeah. All right. How about we not hold the first one in, in abeyance? One-day suspension for that and maintain the two-day suspension for the lack of a scanner.
Is that consecutively or?
How can we structure that? Is it consecutive or?
You have, you have the option.
We have the option. No, you can spread it around.
So we can work to schedule the days with you.
Yeah. That would.
I would appreciate that.
Okay. All right. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make the first one. I move that the Select Board find sufficient evidence that on December sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, Schiff Meg LLC DBA Needham Center Fine Wines violated two oh four CMR two-point zero five parentheses two permitting an illegality on the licensed premises to wit Chapter one thirty-eight, Section thirty-four, sale or delivery of an alcoholic beverage to a person under twenty-one years of age and Town of Needham Regulations for the Sale of Alcoholic Beverages to wit Section three-point five-point one-three requiring use a digital card scanner to confirm authenticity of identification for patrons appearing under the age of forty. And such evidence has been found.
Okay.
And further, I will move that the Select Board suspend Schiff Meg LLC Doing Businesses Needham Center Fine Wines Section fifteen package store all alcohol liquor license for a period of three days to be served on date set in the future to be provided to the board in writing or to be negotiated with the board and provided in writing. And move that the Select Board authorize the town manager to draft and send notice of the Select Board's decision to the licensee until the Alcohol Beverages Control Commission.
Okay. Do you want a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
I, I'm sorry that you're here in this situation. I recognize that it's not a place that anyone wants to be, and we truly don't want this to happen again. And I, I feel, I feel badly that we're holding the line, but I think it's important for the town that we stay strict on this.
I'm agree a hundred percent. Like I said, I've been working in this industry for twenty years, never had violence. This is my first time in here.
It'll be the last.
It'll be the last. I'm hoping.
You have a great store. I love going there. It's great, but I'm happy you're going to now keep doing it right. All right, we're going to come to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed? Unanimous? Okay. Thank you. This concludes this.
And thank you both.
Thank you. Thank you, folks.
Next, we had the Climate Action Roadmap coming up. We have Stephen Frail, Climate Action Plan Committee Chair, and Gabby Queen, Sustainability Manager. The Climate Action Plan Committee was established to guide the town in developing a plan to meet and exceed state regs.
We have a roadmap. So, yeah, so just for two years ago, we were, we were tasked with developing a roadmap, and we have a nice exemplar here. It's a printout, multiple copies, because that would not be environmentally sound.
I enjoy my digital version.
In fact, I think this is a very well-traveled copy that's gone, gone back and forth from, from Gabby's office. But yes, we're very proud to, to share this with the Select Board. We thank you for the charter, the challenge of putting together the town's first climate action roadmap. It was labor of love, and there were many, many people involved with it. I do want to point out that we have a, very early in the roadmap and acknowledgements page, and you can see that it's a, quite a lengthy list of people. And many of them are town staff. Kate, you have, as we heard earlier, an amazing staff. There's been huge contributions from everyone. I personally would call out Hank Half, because I still feel like he's somewhat of the spiritual forefather of a lot of the worst.
The OG.
Yes. He's the OG. But he really helped us set the tone early. And, and so we got a lot of great contributions from the staff along the way. Leadership, different boards, committees, yourself and Mary Ann as well, who provided a lot of guidance along the way. So we're very thankful for all that.
It was a great committee.
It was a very good, very good committee, and we're winding down now. So we invite the board to, to read it, to take to heart its recommendations. After all, that's all this is, is a set of recommendations, hopefully a roadmap to the way the town might want to tackle climate change writ large. As we talked several times, it's really a macro problem. It's not just the town. The town is actually a very small percentage of our carbon emissions in Needham, just about 3%. And we're doing a lot of great things already. I think I celebrated Gabby's arrival, one of the key, key actions that was recommended early on by the committee, and we are thrilled to see her take the role. And the role is already, seems to be paying off in many ways in terms of some new actions, grants that are being written, policies that are being worked on. So yeah.
That's correct.
Bring that back to, it really is, it's a townwide thing, and we're looking forward to introducing this to the town. To that end, in our last committee meeting, we voted as a committee and with you present to put together a public forum to introduce this to the community. And so we're hoping that we have your support to do that at Powers Hall.
June 5th.
June 5th from 6 to 7, 6 to 7 PM. We're planning to send out an email this week to the entire community and invite everyone. We'd like boards and committees to join us. Town staff is of course welcome, but that's after hours, so if they choose not to come. Oh wait, Kate's saying what is after hours? So yes, we're looking to have, have a nice rollout of this and then have an opportunity to also answer questions. What went into it? How did we get to these recommendations? What is the expected impact of these? How will these recommendations get evaluated on an annual basis through the various decision processes the town has in place to take on new actions? So that's, that's our gift to you, and thank you again for all your support on this.
Sure. Now, this committee was fortuitous, the timing. I mean, think what's happened just recently. We, you know, we're doing MBTA zoning, but all that will be to a new standard because we have the, with this committee spearheaded the effort to put in the news, opt-in building code. Pollard will be built to a better standard. Multi-family housing and MBT will be built to what passive house standard?
Hopefully.
Standards. You see, we had the Needham Housing Authority, that just all passed yesterday, and that will also be affected by. So this committee actually was in a perfect spot, a perfect time to make sure more perfect things happen. Before, Needham was a bit of a dark spot on the map of being behind.
Officially. I would, I would point out the town did build an RTS many years ago.
That's true.
An RTS solar array.
Solar array and, and the pine cone building, P S A, yeah.
Yeah, and P S A, which is powered by geothermal.
Right.
So we've done a lot of things over the years.
But I think very quickly in two years, we've catapulted to the front. I'm going to thank you and the, so thank you. You did a great job. Thank you as well. My colleagues, anything?
I, I would love to, well, I know a bit about the Climate Action Plan Committee, and I'm delighted with the product, but I'd love to hear a little bit more about what you've been up to since you got here. And I heard the word grant, and I'd love to hear more about that.
Sure, yeah, I'm, I'm happy to give some highlights and please ask questions. I'm happy to provide more detail. So recently, we were awarded a Mass EVIP grant, which will allow us to purchase an electric vehicle charger for the daily building, which is very exciting because we've just purchased two new electric transit vans. So we're excited to have those and have a, have a charger ready to go for those vehicles to charge. We were selected for Mass D O E R's Municipal Decarbonization Roadmap Grant. This is an exciting development because this will allow us to develop basically a plan for each of our municipal buildings for how we will transition them to be all electric, which we'll need to do because we've set in the roadmap a goal for us to be net zero by 2050 in Needham. So this will help us get on that path, and it will also enable us to be one step closer to meeting the criteria that we need to for the State Climate Leader Communities Program, which is another grant opportunity. So we're, we're well on our way towards that, which is great. We just submitted our Green Communities Grant application for about $163,000, and that will fund hopefully the replacement of lighting at the Elliott School with LED lighting and also heat pump water heaters for Town Hall and 470, the DPW building, which is great because that'll help us get those buildings one step closer to electrification. We are working right now with Charles River Water Set Association on a project for Alterbrook. So this is for the FY24 Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program. Kim Donovan, who's our Compliance Coordinator, helped us get connected with CRWA, and we are working with them to develop flood model and concept designs for stormwater best management practices in that, in that area. And we just submitted with CRWA for a similar project for FY25, for a similar project, but this time for some of the drainage easement around Linden Chambers, which we know is an area that has been prone to flooding. So those are a few of the highlights.
So many of those things are, I mean, well, fabulous, but also super relevant, obviously, to a lot of the goals that the town has. I wonder, how, how are we communicating all of this exciting progress?
Ooh, we have a new webpage.
Yeah, I was going to say. We do have a new sustainability webpage, which is kind of like a landing place for residents to get information about some of the work that's happening in town and also get connected with me so that they can ask more questions. So that's one way. I think we're going to continue to work on doing some updates through News You Needham to make sure that residents are aware as these opportunities are, are developing. But my hope is to build out a strong communication strategy because I completely agree. I think having resident input and awareness is critical for every one of these projects.
Yeah, if I may, I, I think the symbolic power of what the town is doing for its own carbon emissions is much more impactful than the actual carbon that's being removed, right? Because again, it's only 3% of our carbon. But when those electric vans go down the street or the bolts from the municipal, from the DPW go, go through the streets, people start to see that these are just normal things. This is not exotic. This is not, you know, luxury vehicles. These are pragmatic, useful, functional vehicles that are doing the job as good or better is, is what they're replacing. So all of these, these little steps forward, I think are useful.
Mr. Chair, if I could also note Cecilia Simshack, who's in the room, we wouldn't be a green community if it weren't for Cecilia, who did all the legwork prior to the pandemic to get us that award. So thank you, Cecilia.
And thanks to all of our climate meetings.
Awesome. Mr. Chair, so as I was reading through the plan, I, maybe, maybe I misinterpreted. It seemed like the Needham goals for net zero are even more aggressive than the state goals. Is that correct?
No, we're trying to comply with, with the 2050 net zero target. So the, the climate reduction along the way, it's going to go in kind of waves depending on what we do, right? So if we do municipal green aggregation in town, we can accelerate moving that down. More recently, some of the grants that Gabby was talking about, like the decarbonization roadmap, might allow us to get there sooner. But what's important is it's not just the year that you end, it's the, it's the year that you start. So if you think of, of, of the carbon that we're putting in the atmosphere as cumulative, the longer you take to, to start the down to zero, the more carbon collectively you put in the atmosphere. And so it's important for us to get started. We're actually already, you know, all late on this. And that, that, that decarbonization slant has to be accelerated every year more and more in order to hit that 2050.
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, was there a specific example?
So maybe this is outdated information. I had remembered that the state's goals were relative to some 1990s number, that net zero meant you had to reach.
It's, it's, yeah, do you want to go, do you know the?
Well, I was going to say, I think you're referencing the baseline that we're using for emissions reduction. Is that, is that right? Yeah, okay. Yeah, so the greenhouse gas emissions data that we have in the report, our baseline, I think was based on 2017 data, 2017, 2018.
Right.
Because it was before, I'm looking at Cecilia a little bit because I know she helped with the, for Green Communities, because we had put that in place for before we brought Sinida Williams online. So there's a difference in terms of, I guess, the, I see what you're saying, because it's a different year in 1999, the energy usage in Needham was maybe a bit different than it is for 2018. That's true.
It's good to be more aggressive, but I just wanted to confirm.
Yeah, I hadn't thought about it that way. I mean, what's hard is we have really strong data from 2018 and not the same kind of data from 1999, but I would say we're in a very similar boat to other communities in Massachusetts because we did this data collection in part because of the effort towards green communities. And again, huge kudos to Cecilia for helping to lead that Kielan effort. So yeah, it's a, it's an interesting point. I think we're, we're in line with where our other communities are with their goals, but it's true, it's a different baseline year.
Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Chair, I think in addition to the net zero buildings that you talked about, we should also be happy that we are starting on the community electricity irrigation and that last night or two nights, whenever it was, it's all a blur. Recently, we passed the zoning on the solar.
Last Wednesday.
Thank you. The parking canopy, so those are all, you know, geared towards not the government, which is the 3%, but the everything else, which is great. What, what would you say should be our next hill, hills to climb?
Do you want to go over the, the priorities that we are? I should point out that this Thursday, we're having a meeting to officially vote on the priorities that we think are coming next. So we know that the, the green municipal aggregation is a big one. We have the EV first policy, which is another building block for the Community Leaders Program that is being rolled out as sort of the successor of the stacked grant program on top of green communities. If you hear, you'll hear about stacking, right? We have the green communities, and we have now the Community Leaders Grant Program. One of the requirements of that is an EV first policy.
Which means?
Which is slightly different than what we have now. So we have a, we have a efficient vehicle policy, fuel efficient vehicle policy today that says try to get the most fuel efficient vehicle for the job that does the job. An EV first policy says, start with the premise that you should buy an electric, electrified vehicle, electric vehicle first. And then if you can't justify that because of cost or availability, then you go to the fossil fuel options. And what it's really trying to do is not just focus on efficiency, which is where Green Communities was, was about like efficiency. Now it's about electrification. It's the same thing that's happening in, in building, like we had building efficiency, right? Like let's change the lights to LEDs, that's reducing less energy. Now the emphasis is on heat pumps, getting the fossil fuels completely out of the structure because there's no amount of fossil fuels that is actually acceptable if we're going to hit net zero. We have to put, put ourselves on the roadmap for it. So EV first policy is one, one building block in that. But beyond that, I think we've talked a lot about outreach, right?
Yes, yeah, we'd like to move towards developing an electrify Needham campaign, which is similar to what's been adopted in other communities. As was discussed, really kind of starting to build a more dedicated outreach education area for residents and business owners to get information about accessing, you know, financing opportunities for making improvements, kind of helping them to figure out how to navigate some of this decision making. What kind of order do you think about when you're looking at making your home more sustainable and resilient to the changes that we're seeing with, with climate change? So the hope is that we'll be able to make some great strides in building out that program this summer. We have an intern from the University of Michigan who'll be starting next week. We're very grateful to the University of Michigan because they are fully funding that position. So we'll get some, some great assistance for that. And then the other piece that I would just mention is the electric vehicle chargers. I think that's going to be kind of a continuing point that we build on every year, both as we look at electrifying our municipal fleet and also making sure that there's electric vehicle charging accessible to all residents in Needham, including those who are in multi-family buildings, and really trying to make sure we're making that as accessible as we really can.
One point I'd make on the outreach is that this is a complicated transition. It's going to take many, many years, right? And it's going to cost money. It's, it's going to be an investment. A lot of homeowners, we're going to have to make these investment choices themselves, either for their home or their vehicles. The outreach, I think, is really important because there's a lot of noise. There's a lot of companies, you know, who are on this, this, this wave, and it's hard to tell what's truth and what's not. And I think what Gabby really brings us and what she's trying to, trying to build is that honest broker, the, the person that town members can trust, that she doesn't have any stake in the information she's sharing, that the town backs these, these ideas and in the way it approaches. And one example is that both Gabby and I were recently trained to be heat pump, heat pump coaches, which is something that is a very, it's a volunteer role, and it's to help homeowners sort through all of the steps and decision points they need to make when they're trying to decide when that furnace dies, what do I replace it with, right? Or that boiler dies. What am I going to replace it with? I would like to call out Green Needham and Ed Quinlan. Ed Quinlan actually was a heat pump coach who worked with us. We replaced our, our boiler. We replaced our boiler with a heat pump. And I think that was one of the inspirations for, for myself. I don't know if that was an inspiration for you taking the training as well.
Yeah, I've heard, you know, great things from sustainability staff in other communities about building out energy coaching programs because residents, you know, like you're saying, are overwhelmed by the amount of information that's out there. And so it can be a nice tool. And Heat Smart Alliance, who runs this program, is very well recognized across Massachusetts for the work that they do training their volunteer coaches. So yeah, it's a, it's a great opportunity, and I'm glad we got to take part in it.
I also just have to say, I'm impressed at how she knows all the acronyms.
Oh, there's a lot of acronyms. Don't test me.
Never, never mess up on them either. I always stumble over what they mean. That's her talent.
Awesome. Thank you very much. All right, so the forum is on June 5th?
June 5th at Powers Hall.
Okay.
6:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Invite will go out this Thursday on the News You Needham.
Yes, yes.
And then we're hoping that, you know, the select board attends, other boards and committees in town as well.
And the report will be where, online?
Well, it's available on the sustainability webpage, which if you go to Town Departments, you'll see it's right at the bottom.
Maybe that will go out with the invitation?
Yes, it is linked on the invitation as well.
It is already.
Yes, good point. It's included there too.
That's great. Now, could I get a motion from you guys? Accept the report.
Mr. Chair, I move that the select board vote to adopt and publish the Climate Action Roadmap.
Second.
Discussion? We've done that. All right, come to the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we accepted it. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Fantastic. Congratulations.
Thanks for coming in.
Good job.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to move the consent agenda, but I'd also like to call out this giant donation from the Needham Community Council. More than $6,000. Very impressive and appreciated.
Great.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No one? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, next we have the town manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I asked Dave Davidson to talk to us about our free cash and what the status is. It's higher than we had initially projected and what Dave's thoughts are about why that is and what that means for the future.
Good evening.
See you again.
Yes. Seemed like only earlier this morning.
It was actually the same day. That's true.
So, Mr. Chair and members of the board. So, Mr. Chair and members of the board, the town did receive its certification for free cash, which expires on June 30th for fiscal 2024, which is one of the sources that we use for non-recurring expenditures generally. And it was certified at $23.8 million, which compares to last year, where we were at $17.4 million. The, which is a change of $6.4 million between the two years. Some of the factors that, that caused us to have a better year-end result came, one, revenues came in much stronger than the amount of the budget. There's, one part of it is collections of back taxes were much stronger during fiscal '23. And again, just to remind the board how this all works, the activities of '23 are the sources that generate free cash for '24, which we use for the appropriations in '25. So we're wrapping up fiscal '24 in several more weeks. And once we know the year-end results for FY '24, which will be sometime late in the fall, early winter, that will be the information that we'll have free cash certified by the time that we're looking at the annual town meeting warrant and such next year for our FY '26 appropriations.
Can I just clarify one thing, because I want to make sure that I understand while you continue. Free cash, you said expires on June 30th?
Correct.
This year.
Correct.
So, I know we appropriated some at town meeting, but we didn't appropriate all of it.
That is correct.
So what happens to the balance?
It closes out to your fund balance, and free cash is not something we decide. It's the Department of Revenue that decides how much of your, how much of your fund balance you're allowed to expend. And it's only good for that one fiscal year. Secondly, the town can't appropriate any money from free cash until the Department of Revenue has actually certified it. So it's a one-year period that it's, hence why it's called an available fund, because once it's certified, it's available, and the available fund ends at the end of the fiscal year, because it has to be recertified for the next fiscal year. Now, of course, that has closed out the fund balance, so for fiscal '25, when free cash is certified, we know that we have $6.5 million that we roll, that closed out, that will close out the fund balance, that automatically is like the floor that we're looking at next year. Whereas last year, we had turned back $2.3 million of the $17.4 million that was certified. So, in effect, of the '23, $2.3 million of that was the price.
Was the last year's money, correct. Thank you.
The, so the one factor was the revenues came in much stronger. One was collection of back taxes. Two, the economy and some of the economic drivers in Needham have been except, were exceptionally strong during fiscal '23. They've been strong for several years, but '23 was a very good year, which includes building permit income that's generated. Building permit revenue came in at $3.2 million more than what was budgeted, or was assumed for collections. Now, there's one notable project that contributed more than half of that surplus, and that is, of course, the children's hospital, which was alone $1.8 million.
Right.
So motor vehicle excise tax revenue, much, much stronger. It is an area that we tried to be conservative on, because it is, it generally counts between 30% to 35% of all local receipts. And if you overestimate that revenue stream, you can find yourself in serious economic trouble. So we generally never want to estimate more than, what, 80% of what we think reasonably could be collected. But it came in much stronger. Sales of vehicles that were for, that impacted the FY '23 motor vehicle excise tax included sales of vehicles in '21 and '22. And the, and some of the factors that helped, not only were vehicle sales high, but of course, as was just noted, EV vehicles are higher. And comparable EV vehicles to a gas-powered or diesel-powered fuel tend to have a higher sticker price. And it is not what you pay for the vehicle determines the motor vehicle excise tax, but the sticker price. That's where the motor, the registry of motor vehicle makes the determination of value. And then it's a set depreciation schedule. It's the same for all vehicles, 90, 75, 40, 25, and then 10% forevermore.
Okay. And then the evermore.
So, and the, and then interest revenues, of course, interest rates increased significantly in '23, and they've stayed very strong through all of fiscal '24, so that'll be a major contributor, we know, for next year's free cash. But that came in at just under $1 million over the estimate. And, so those three numbers that I talked about, overestimates, to compare them to the FY '24 free cash certification, the $3.2 million overestimate on permit revenue compares to $1.1 million the year before. Whereas motor vehicle excise tax at $2.1 million compares to $1.8 million. Not as great of a dramatic change, but still much more. But most notably, interest revenue, which came in almost at $1 million, $93,000 more. The year before was $44,000. So those are the factors on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, another contributor to free cash is that which is not spent and returned, the operating budget being the most notable. In FY '23, effectively 4% of the total budget was returned as unspent. Compared to FY '24, the prior year's free cash, which was 3.9% different. So a slight uptick, but notable. So in other words, in numbers, 8.3% compared to 7.7%. So contributing. Then the last factor, it's not what DOR does, your fund balance. They don't actually turn or look at the fund balance to say what percentage you can spend. It's a formula that they use. They look at your assets, they look at your collections, they look at your deficits in terms of calculation what's available. But for the layperson, the calculation I do is what percentage of your unassigned, basically your profit, will they allow the town to appropriate for other purposes? Well, last year, or for this year that it just got certified, it was, had 66%, basically 66% of the total available resources, uncommitted resources, the Department of Revenue certified available for appropriation. The year before that was 59%. Just that variable alone, that variable alone accounted for $2.4 million more. So had the Department of Revenue process certified only 59% of our available resources at the end of fiscal '23, it would have been $2.4 million less. So, now, generally, if you certified more and you used more, you'll have less the following year. However, because of our actions that we took, by returning 6.4, it won't be as a dramatic hit on free cash certification next year, because we returned more. When you can take the amount that we returned in FY, at the end of FY ' '23, $2.3 million, and you take the extra amount that the Department of Revenue effectively allowed the town to appropriate, another 2.3, so you're looking at $4.6 million. We collectively are returning $6.5 million, so that puts us in a better position for free cash certification, which would speak to free cash certification in the $20 million range again for next year.
So, if I may, just ask another question. It seems like part of the reason that we didn't appropriate more, though, is because we got it so late. The certifications came so late that we actually had to pull articles from our warrant. So what, I mean, so what are the consequences of not having funded those funds?
I do not know of any appropriation. We did-
The stabilization funds.
The stabilization funds.
We made no recommendations for them.
That is correct. That's not spending. That's further savings. So whether it closes up, yes, if it closes out the fund balance, or we put it away for a specific purpose, it's not spending.
I see, okay.
So it would have been positive to be able to contribute more, but because of the timing of the exact amount, it, it was too rushed to determine what amounts to put into those funds. That is one of the actions we're going to do during the summer months, meet with a subcommittee, the Finance Committee, and then with the Select Board to determine what amounts we may want to contribute into those funds in the future, knowing that this free cash level is not going to continue in the long run. Eventually, those margins are going to get tighter.
And we are putting new processes in place, and we have new staff, and we hopefully will have fewer IT conversion issues to have, to work towards having free cash earlier so that we can make recommendations earlier, too.
Mr. Chair, that was actually my question, was, it sounds like this is something that bounces around a lot, and it's, am I right in thinking you don't see this as some sort of long-term trend? Higher and higher free cash.
Higher and higher free cash as a percentage of overall resources. We do not expect to continue. That's one of the reasons we don't consider recurring. Just naturally, as everything increases, inflation increases, the nominal dollars-
Right, but as a percentage, no.
As a percentage, no. This, this has been a peak, several peak years of better economic activity for Needham, in particular, and in the state generally. And so that puts us in a better position to try to weather if there is a downturn. We certainly are not optimistic with state aid next year, as we were cautious this year, and the numbers seem to be coming in at the levels that we were estimating, based upon the Senate Ways and Means Budget. We'll know more in the coming weeks. But the state is not looking at strong revenue growth in the following year, so that would suggest that for the fiscal '26 budget, that things will be tighter.
If I could just follow up. In the spirit of saving for a rainy day, can this free cash go into these stabilization funds? I was a little-
Yes, town meeting can appropriate the monies to the funds. And it would have been quite appropriate to do so at this town meeting or at any town meeting. It just, the sense was making decisions days away from town meeting.
Too rushed.
And then, too rushed. Although, Select Board certainly understands the importance of it. I know the Finance Committee understands the importance of it, and there's general support for doing so. Doing it as you're meeting 45 minutes before instead of town meeting just isn't a good public policy.
So even though the, sorry, even though the funds expire at the end of this fiscal year, are you saying that we can still?
They'll be recertified next year, and funds can be-
Nothing can be done at October town meeting? This is only something that can happen in May, assuming that the funds were certified?
Correct. Once the funds are available, they can be appropriated at any town meeting after they're available. Whether we have funds available in October, we're looking at October 21st for the special town meeting. We could be directing funds then, or it could be in May.
May.
Dave, when you talk about the percentage, if we think about 4% or 3.9% or whatever, do you think, I remember Ann Galati used to say that she had basically a fully expended budget if she had 3% or 4% left, that, you know, like, there was some level, because you can't overspend, that you're not going to get any closer to that. Is that the nominal place that you think is the right place for the town budget?
Oh, yes. Ms. Galati and I are on the same page on that issue.
Okay.
That 4% is basically-
We've done everything we can do, pretty much.
And hence why, in terms of policy, why we say that although using free cash for the operating budget is not a, not a practice the community would want to be in. And of course, Needham had some very, very tough years, because in some years, they used all its free cash to balance its budget, because it relied too much upon it, which then resulted in overrides and everything. But by not, by appropriating no more than an amount of free cash that you can reasonably assume could reoccur, which the mantra is 2% or less. So basically, half of what, you know, what a fully expended budget would be, would be available for appropriations. And interestingly enough, since we've, that mantra has been working, we have not had an operating override.
Right. No, it has worked well. And then the other question I had, I came in sort of in the middle of your discussion of permit revenue, so I, I didn't catch all of it. But I think you said something like, this year's was approximately $3.2 million, and I think that was largely due to, like, the children's project being in the mix this year?
That was certainly a major contributor.
All right. And a year ago would have been 1.1. Is 1.1 a more typical running rate for how you think about permit revenue? Or do you have a number that you think about as a, a kind of a base rate? Because in any given year, I know we have certain things that we look at as, I'm not going to, it's not exactly a bluebird, but as some major development project that adds to sort of a base level of development that's going on in town.
We look at, also very conservative, because permit is based on building activity and very volatile. You can have significant swings from one year to, to another, much more so than you do in motor vehicle excise. So we tend to estimate at a much lower level. We know there's a certain amount of residential activity, and we're not talking building, teardowns and building new houses, but we know there's a certain of improvements that are happening in the community every single year. There is improvements and refreshments that are happening to commercial buildings that happen every year. So we do estimate building permits in over $1 million. But we would never, we have never estimated, even with the children's, we knew children's was going to be coming on. We didn't bump up the estimate for permits, because it could have failed. It could have not received their funding. And that's the volatility. But once you appropriate it, you have to raise it. And that's the consequence.
So what do you think that base level is? How?
The-
I was curious.
We tend to look at not more than 65% of the average actual returns over the last three years. It's a moving average we use.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I, to Mary Ann's question, I think I read at the Department of Revenue, it's like the turnback or the expenditures less than what was budgeted is typically, or recommended to be between 3% and 5%. Is that, I mean, that's where we fall, so.
Yes, correct.
It's not a typical. And then I remember, in the past years, the sources of free cash were pretty balanced between expenditures less than what was budgeted and revenues more than what was expected. But it sounds like in this case- But it sounds like in this case, it was weighted more towards revenues more than expected.
Yes, and then again, because of those extraordinary sources of revenue that I described as well as the return of the economy after COVID. Or in other words, put it two years ago or the or the or the free cash that was used to fund FY '23's budget, for instance. Complete opposite, revenues were $3.8 million, whereas returns were $6.2 million. So it can flip back and forth as quickly. And that also shows the volatility of the swing in revenues. And since property taxes are basically stable, it's all those other local receipts that are more effective with swings and changes in the economy.
When the summer or the fall, when the stabilization funds are reviewed with targets, I'm hoping that there can be review for targets for free cash as well. Not not targets in the sense of when we have cash, what do we do with it? So when do we put the money into stabilization funds? In what amount, certainly. But also, if we have money even in excess of that, what do we do with it? One of my pet peeves is seeing $6.5 million that's just not appropriated, hanging around because it's not, in my opinion, it's a limited utility because we can't use it until it's certified. So it's not really a stabilization fund. We can't use it in case of emergency unless the DOR happens to certify it in time. I think in my mind, it's best to either put it in a stabilization fund or another option is to return some of it in the form of tax reduction to lower the tax rate. So that could be another option as well. I mean, I think the practical effect would be essentially funding the budget more with free cash. But these are monies that, at least in part, were previously taxed from residents. And so that is an option.
Um, yes, or you could also say there were charges to developers in the permits that they generated, that which which isn't real estate taxes. That was and interest income certainly isn't property taxes. So I do understand that free cash and when you have years like this year of having a plan of probably what amount not to spend and set aside, I would say, although I think any of us would appreciate a tax rebate, that also takes it off the table to address any emergency. Plus, then you're going to have to then re-up everybody's taxes. And then when you thought your tax bill was going to be $10,000 and now it's $12,000.
Basically, what I'm imagining is a priority list. Like, you know, if you have, you know, priority one, fully fund your staples. Well, you know, fully fund your needed expenditures. Already told, fully fund your stabilization funds, you know, then, you know, only at the very end, if you still have money left, maybe a tax break, something like that.
Seems like, given that we know that we have a crazy amount of expenditures coming up, giving back, while I appreciate the idea. I mean, it would be a reasonably small amount to each resident, whereas in aggregate, it could make a big dent in pile of debt. So it seems to, I mean, not my area of expertise, but it just seems like in aggregate, using it that way makes makes more impact.
So I think I was thinking along the same lines as Heidi. I think there's a philosophical discussion that we'll end up having at some point, probably this summer, right? That's going to say, are we going to use these funds for planning to smooth those peaks that we see upcoming to achieve goals that we think the town has articulated us as things that they want to have happen? Or do we want to make those peaks harder to reach by doing something different? And I just think that's a conversation that we'll need to have. I look forward to Dave's guidance on that.
And and again, that's a conversation from the finance committee. Certainly, we're looking at the debt service stabilization fund, which is another way to actually provide relief to the taxpayer by able to smooth out the impact of of tax increases for which I think everyone at the table understands that if the polit school is approved by the MSBA and the town elects to go forward, that is going to be a debt exclusion. And that will be additional taxes. So trying to smooth out the impact of that.
Anything that could be applied to reduce that is actually a tax relief if you assume that the project is going to go forward.
And I would imagine that saving in that way might have some beneficial impact on our reading of the town and our ability to borrow.
Oh, yes, that that 6.5 will be highlighted by your by your finance department when we talk to S and P in a few weeks.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My brain is. Amazing, thank you very much.
I'm glad you're back staffed.
Yeah, but don't ever leave.
Shh, don't even say that. All right, Kate, what else do we have?
I just wanted to, you know, thank the board and all of the town meeting members and the committee members, particularly the staff going to town meeting for those long hours. Many of them who were capable of going or family obligations were watching, they told me. But it strikes me, the balcony has been a wonderful amenity for us. The seats aren't that comfortable, I think Cecilia would attest. I don't know that they were intended for that long. But that balcony was not intended to be usable in the first draft, the first design of Town Hall because there was no way to make it accessible by the elevator. And so when we got favorable pricing and we had some very determined advocates, we added that bridge from the elevator to the balcony. And that enabled us to use it for its purpose. And so whenever I look up and we can, we actually see people and we hold our phone up because we're asking them for a question. And it's just a lot easier than if they're, I don't even know how they would fit at this point in the back. So it's just so great. I always tell anybody who can come, there's no substitute for seeing, understanding where the town is thinking is to sit through town meeting, even in uncomfortable chairs in the balcony. So thanks to everybody. And we had we had a huge number of department managers and a number of staff who who came and wanted to see what town meeting was all about. So thank them, too.
Yeah, it was great. And thank you all the staff for staffing it. Miles. Yeah.
Mission control.
Mission control.
Comes everywhere.
No, that was a good town meeting. It was long, but it was, that was really.
It was only three nights, what are you talking about?
But the nights were long, I know.
And the days were short.
No, I'm surprised it didn't go to four, four nights. But kind of happy, we just, you know.
Tomorrow night off.
Yeah. All right. Next, we have committee reports. Anything about home you want to tell us about?
I've been busy being at town meeting.
All right, I actually have to. Discuss myself. Town meeting was great. We also had committee conversations last week. And that was great. High schools do a great program. There was also the, oh, I should also tell you, I'm on a new committee. I'm on the trustees of Memorial Park. It turns out the chair is about one year. It becomes a trustee of Memorial Park. I'm on that committee. I'll tell you all about it. There's also rededication at the Eastman Conservation Area School Department. So I came there. It was great. Sweet, yeah, Miles, it was it was great. And it was a beautiful day. And it's hard to believe it was 50 years ago. Okay. And then. And that's all I got. So, oh, yeah, anything else? Good? Article 40?
I regret that we did not talk enough about Article 40 during the meeting, the town meeting. I wish that we had discussed at greater length Article 40. For those who don't know, Katie's birthday always lines up at the town meeting, and she hates this discussion. But because Marcus, the mischief maker, wasn't with us this year, we forgot. We were sliding in. So now we have to do it here. I feel like we have to explain. But happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
All right, well.
Happy birthday.
The owl's not capturing it.
All right, so, Mr. Chair, I move that we adjourn.
Serious?
Yeah.
Second.
No, we really have to hang that motion. That's what I'm wondering.
All in favor?
All right, hold on, I blew the votes. It was seconded, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm tired, yes, we're adjourned.